Good evening, welcome to the Harwich Planning Board for the meeting of thirteenth of September. This is being held in person and will be available as a live broadcast on channel eighteen. We would like to, according to Mass Law, request that anyone who intends to record the meeting, please notify the Chair. Anybody who can record it, nope, so everybody would know. Would you please, I call the meeting to order and I would like to invite you to join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we began this evening with a waiver of site plan, PB twenty twenty-two dash twenty, linear retail, fourteen twenty-one Orleans Road. Mr. Andrew Singer is here, I believe. Good evening, Mr. Counselor. How are you doing this evening?
I'm doing well, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Andrew Singer, attorney in Dennisport. With me tonight is Ralph Perelis from Linear Retail. We were here before you on an informal, informal, somewhat recently. So this is the same request and this is for the shopping plaza at fourteen twenty-one Orleans Harwich Road. This is just a change of tenant and so what it is is some door changes on the building, basically. This is a unit that has three sides, it's one of the end cap units. There will be some restriping, some moving of landscaping, but there's going to be no reduction in parking spaces, no reduction in landscaping, no reduction in traffic safety. It is just a, you know, removing some walls to put in the doors, the loading bay, the loading door, et cetera. We believe respectfully that this will have no impact or substantially change the relationship of the structure to the site or to the abutting properties, which is the legal standard for a waiver. And I'll just stop there. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them and we appreciate your time.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board? Anything? Anyone from the public? Oh, Craig, sorry.
No, I do not.
You don't, okay. Any questions from the public? It looks like there's nothing. Megan, it looks like the limited recommendations are pretty straightforward here. Did you have any comment that you wanted to make?
They are pretty straightforward. Elaine had told me that these limited recommended conditions aren't actual conditions.
Right.
And that they're just direction on how to get a building permit through.
Well, if there's no questions about this...
So I just have one.
Yeah.
Andrew.
Yes.
Through Mr. Chair to you. I know you had just recited the criteria for waiver of site plan and I just want to make sure that I get them right because I don't see them on the list here. It is that the proposal does not substantially change the relationship of the building to the land, correct?
Well, it's to the site and to abutting properties and structures. So it's both...
Could you repeat that for me?
Yes, does not change the relationship of the structure to the site and to abutting properties and structures.
To the, I'm sorry, to the site and...
To abutting properties.
To abutting properties, yes.
And structures.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, there it is, never mind, I do see it. I read right over it.
Number eight, right.
So I make a motion that we adopt the following findings of fact. One, that the applicant, Linear Retail, is the owner of the property at fourteen twenty-one Orleans Road, East Harwich map eighty-seven parcel N one, which is a multi-tenant retail property, four hundred east shopping plaza. Two, the property is located at the corner of Route thirty-nine Orleans Road and Route one thirty-seven and is in the CH dash two Commercial Highway two zoning district. The shopping plaza has vehicular access available from Route thirty-nine and Route one thirty-seven. Three, the application is made on behalf of a new Lessee Sherwin-Williams paints. Four, the applicant has made application for a waiver of site plan pursuant to the Harwich zoning code, section three twenty-five dash fifty-five dot F, and the application was prepared and submitted in accordance with the applicable requirements of the Harwich Code. Five, the case materials and plans were submitted and stamped in with the town clerk on August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. They are entitled Sherwin-Williams Tenant Fit-Up Prepared by CME Architects, Inc., Plainville, Mass, dated eight seventeen twenty twenty-two, and includes an existing site plan sheet DD dot four A, proposed site plan sheet DD dot four B, proposed and existing exterior west elevations sheet A three dot one, proposed and existing exterior north elevations sheet A three dot two, proposed and existing exterior east elevations sheet A three dot three, and a project narrative. Six, the proposed proposal details mainly with exterior changes to the doors and windows and associated landscape feature, landscaping features. Certain parking spaces will be restriped, but there will be no decrease in the number of spaces, whether site infrastructure, stormwater, septic, changes are necessary or proposed. Seven, the health department has no issues with the scope of the project. Eight, pursuant to the Harwich Code three twenty-five dash fifty-five F, the proposal does not substantially change the relationship of the structure to the site and to abutting properties and structures, and accordingly, the proposal does not require site plan review, special permit approval. Nine, the board held a duly noticed public meeting on the waiver of site plan review request on September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further comment or questions, considerations? Hearing none, I suggest we take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous?
So I would further move that the planning board adopt the recommend, adopt and grant a waiver from site plan review for case number twenty twenty-two dash twenty, Linear Retail, and the plan set entitled Sherwin-Williams Tenant Fit-Up Prepared by CME Architects, Inc., Plainville, Mass, dated eight seventeen twenty twenty-two, and would further state that the proposed, one, the proposed development shall be undertaken consistent with the plans referenced in the application material set out above, two, that this decision shall run with the property, three, that the decision shall not be effective until such notice of decision is recorded with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, and four, that the applicant shall design and permit any proposed exterior signs in accordance with the applicable requirements of the Harwich Code.
We have another motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Chadwick. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I suggest we take a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Congratulations. Thank you. So the next item on the agenda is a continuation, request for inspection completion, sign-off as built for the Stone Horse property on Route twenty-eight. I think that letter in here is to request to continue, so I suspect that this will take us to our next meeting, which is October, what, sixteenth or something like that?
What, the fourth?
Fourth, excuse me. October fourth, yes. So I suggest that we entertain a motion for the continuance.
I'll make a motion that upon the request of the applicant, we continue the hearing for Main Street Stone Horse LLC, PB twenty nineteen dash thirteen, to October fourth at a time and place certain.
Just point of clarification, I don't think it's a hearing, it's just, it's just an item.
Excuse me, you are correct.
We have motion, second?
Sure, second.
We have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that goes, all right. We're just blowing through this agenda.
Works for me tonight.
Yeah. So we've also been discussing about having a member to the Capitol Outlay Committee. We haven't had anybody since Joe McParland died, when was that?
January.
In January.
Yeah, I thought.
It's a long time. So we need to have somebody on that and we had an informal discussion earlier to the fact that Ann would volunteer on a kind of a trial basis, right, to see how it goes and...
You don't scare me to that?
Right, if it works out, then, so we have you and it looks like we've got at least one candidate as an alternate coming in at some point and so we may have more, if it doesn't work out, there are other fallback options, including Craig, and so we've got two fallbacks, so...
So we're heading into budget season.
Budget season.
This is, this is a busy time, so I mean, I guess, my only point is that if you're willing to do it, it's just, it's a busy time, that's, this is when you're going to meet because this is when the budget's getting put together and the capital requests are coming in, so...
And it heads all towards town meeting and...
Yes, and towards, this is really, it's really more for the budget for next year for annual town meeting, yes.
Yeah. When is the time commitment?
A lot in budget season.
The time commitment, I mean, I couldn't speak to it, I don't see the...
There'll be a lot of meetings between now and...
Typically twice a month during this busy time, they didn't meet at all in August and then they met sporadically through May through July, so this time of year, it's at least twice a week, um, twice a month, and then when it comes time to vote the warrant, it may be more than that.
Because they're, they're meeting and voting on every...
Right.
Every capital item.
Means the Capitol outlay, so it's the five-year plan.
They review and vote on every Capitol outlay.
It's the five-year plan that's coming, that's coming before.
Is it five-year now or seven?
Yeah, seven.
It's five-year.
It's five, okay.
Correct, it's five.
It's five, it's five, we're waiting on the AGs.
I was...
Determination.
We can do that.
Sounds like this would be grad school for the finance committee.
That sounds like grad school.
I say go for it if you're interested in doing it, I just would...
Stop discouraging her.
I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm, I'm just saying it's...
We got somebody on the line, Mary.
All right, let's reel it in here, come on.
No, I agree with you, Mary.
It's hard to also pass off in the middle of a budget season, so that's my, that's my only, my only comment it can be, because you're in the, you're deep in the weeds.
Right.
They're already deep in the weeds right now.
They're starting.
They're going to be starting.
They've had one meeting, right?
They're going to start.
Yeah.
So, I'm happy to make a motion to appoint him.
Don't do that. And I'm happy to second.
So we have a second, motion a second. All in favor?
Aye.
But it was provisional, is that correct?
And, and, and in the way that they are...
You can always resign.
Like if you can't do it, you can't do it, we'll bring it back.
You can always, you can always resign if it's not, if it's too much for you.
Be fine.
Then you resign. I mean, and that's just a, that's a fact of...
That's the way...
The way it works.
Right, that's appointments are...
Just dive into the weeds, you're going to be great. Figure out where all the money is, got it, all right.
Yeah, it's, as Mary said, it's a big time commitment between now and finalization of the budget, but once that's done, you know, you go back to regular meetings or no meeting at all, if there's no business in that given month, so as long as you go in with your eyes open.
Is it, is it from a, is it a requirement to be at the meeting, you can't?
You're a voting member.
You're a voting member, so...
Physically.
So you see in the packet?
Yeah.
Okay, because that's kind of lays it out.
Yeah, it's just the... You were asking about could you participate for...
Remotely, I don't, that's a good question, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't think they set it up that way, let me look at their agenda, their last agenda.
I don't know that they, I don't know what they do for it, but remote participation is scheduled to end again in December, so...
Yeah.
Oh, is it?
Yeah, they did not have a remote, they didn't have a call-in, dial-in. Was that unanimous vote?
Yes.
Yes, I believe it was.
That was unanimous.
Unless Ann didn't vote for herself, that's the only, that's the only way it wasn't.
Yeah.
All right, I'm doing what Craig suggested, I'll go to a meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. So you're, you'll be on the agenda for this Board of Selectmen?
Is it a Board of Selectmen confirmation?
Confirmation.
Of the planning board's recommendation?
Yes.
Well, I'll see you on Monday because I'm delivering the, the next, well, it's coming up.
Annual report, yeah.
So the next item is minutes, I didn't see anything, did anybody else?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as written for July twenty-seventh and August twenty-third of two thousand twenty-two.
I didn't see any minutes, did you?
Yep.
They were attached.
Were they?
Or they were fine.
I didn't see them. Yeah, fine, I'll take a quick look.
You're going to speed read it, I'll withdraw my motion until you're done.
They were mercifully compact, because those were some long meetings.
Yeah, it was the meeting, yeah.
So they're very nicely summarized, very well done, I thought, so... You good, are we all good with these? You okay, Ann, with this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So we have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Maslowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous, acceptance of the minutes from the twenty-seventh and the, the line of the twenty-third of August. And the last item on the agenda this evening for this mercifully brief briefing section is the annual meeting to the Board of Selectmen is on Monday and, excuse me, annual report, so I worked with Elaine, we developed the kind of the debt, data set, the brief highlights and who is in the committees and everybody's, I'm assuming that everybody, it says that everybody has passed the ethics test.
I have not. I've taken a test, I've reviewed the materials, but I've not taken...
Okay, because all you have to do is like go through and check.
And check it.
And check it and just go do it, so...
I can do that before Monday. Between now and Monday.
Okay, well, it sent me an email...
It's online.
Oh, yeah, no, I've done them in all others.
Yeah, okay.
So you're, you're supposed to do it within, when you're appointed to a new board and then every other year, you have to do them.
Is it, is there a link for the checking?
It's the same link actually for the review stuff, there's a little window to the lower left and there's a kind of navigation bar and you hit take tests.
Okay, I've reviewed it via an email, like...
In the, so when you got sworn in, they probably gave you a booklet with the summary conflict of interest law in it.
Right.
It's, it's there, it's on the back page of that.
Okay.
And it's literally, I think, like forty or fifty questions, you just click of your multiple choice and push next, and then if you don't get the right one, then they ask you to do it again until you get it right.
Got it.
You just follow the links for the municipal, municipal as opposed to state employees, important commission members.
Prior to Monday.
Yeah.
The only question I had was Elaine said that we've used the mullion rule twice, I think we only used it once.
I used it once and Bill used it, Bill used it for me.
Bill used it, okay, all right.
Oh, right, right.
All right, I didn't remember signing off on Bill's.
We did.
Okay.
We did and we have the paperwork, I'm sure you left it with your paper, she'd done, because he had come in to do it.
Okay.
I had two suggestions, Mr. Chairman, on the last question on the, for the Board of Selectmen annual report, what does our board need at the bottom?
Mm-hmm.
A town planner.
Right.
And a consultant for the LCP.
Oh, oh, L, yeah.
L, local comprehensive plan.
Yep.
Which I think John Ideman might have started something on it, but I don't know what, and I know, I think, weren't we supposed to hire a consultant? Not we, the planning board, we, the town of Harwich to assist for that?
I believe so, I believe there was a...
So maybe that just stopped when John left, I don't know.
We, we received money in an article for an LCP consultant.
Like fifty or seventy-five?
And once we get a planner and this LCP group starts moving along, we will put an RFP out to hire a...
To hire someone?
Yeah.
Okay.
There was also, I think, I think we had in years past, we had always talked about having, having a consultant drive the bus, and then I think John Ideman had shifted that a little bit, feeling that we should...
Yeah.
Be more local and so, I mean, changing, changing philosophies can sometimes...
I hear you.
Slow the process, but that's...
And not having a planner really slows the process.
Yeah, absolutely, of course.
Or an inspector, blue inspector.
One of the things that we, that John did talk about that, that would be nice is also having a planner to be able to do a comprehensive review of our zoning bylaws.
Right.
Kind of pick up the...
Well, you know, from my understanding, this is something that we ought to discuss because apparently he left a annotated copy of the bylaws with his ideas for language fixes and reference tabs about what, you know, the rationale behind each one, so that might be a...
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, it's a lot of work and we should definitely be picking up on that, so I, I don't, I suspect that we haven't heard the last of Mr. Ideman in this town planning scenario, so we'll see what happens, but it would be nice to get, bring him in at some capacity and see if he can help us, you know, do the, do the right thing with his work, so...
Do you think he could do that?
He's already, he's already a town planner in another community.
I know, but I, but he's a resident of this town. He could, he could serve the town by leveraging the work that he's already, even if it's just a recommendation.
Not as big consultant.
No, I'm just saying it's like...
I don't know how any of that's going to, going to fully work, but I think if we have annotations and I think we look at them...
Right.
And we provide them to town council who, at some point, we were using Adam Costa, whether it's Adam Costa, whether it's, it's, planning board always hired me, Talman, and Costa for, for our stuff, but you have them look it over and give us comments, I guess, you know, depending on what, what funds are available for council, but...
And I don't want to speak for him, but I would suspect if we had questions that we couldn't answer, he'd be willing to answer a question, not necessarily come on a board or...
That's kind of what I, that's kind of what I meant, it's like, he's a resident, he's got skin in the game here, that's all I meant, you know, so...
Where, where are we on a town planner?
That's the...
Kind of back to the...
That's why I suggested we put it...
Sort of back to the drawing board.
Right, I guess the last one bounced off, right? The last two.
Last one, the last one bounced off, we're trying to negotiate salary with someone, but it's not, it's not going well.
Okay then, well, we'll get somebody, we'll get somebody at some point.
Yep.
It's all good.
So the last item is the DRI for Denwich Road, you know, that road up there by Eagle, it's Eagle Pond, right? So in North Harwich, west of Depot and Arline? Yeah, so it's main that goes left and Denwich is like that north-south road that separates, so I do not know what the status of this is, but I suspect that this has been something that, for which we've had some...
What is this?
Some discussion like that goes back probably four years or something, and it was a road that was created because there was, it was like a, well, we'll have to get the full report, I guess, from Elaine on this, but...
This isn't, I mean, this is something that I would be looking for, for our engineers to tell us more than, than Elaine at that point, just, I mean, this isn't...
Is, I wasn't sure what we were expected to do, was it just correspondence and advisory or do we have a role to play in?
Well, DRI goes straight to the commission, so...
That's what I thought, so this is just advisory to us, FYI, kind of thing?
Correct, like that this is going on and we were involved in the past, just so that we'll be tracking it in the future, so...
But nothing we need to...
It holds all development, so nothing can...
Right, yeah, okay.
I'm writing that right, it holds all permits until Cape Cod Commission says, was it, why was it a DRI, was it the size of the project?
I believe it's because of, it's eighty, eighty thousand square feet of disturbance.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense.
So it had to go to the DRI and you're right, you don't need to have a vote or do anything this evening, you can follow it. I'm not sure if their meetings will be virtual or not, but you could attend if you wanted to, just to keep yourself apprised of the situation.
Yep.
But it's all, as Mary said, and this is a question, it's in the hands of the Cape Cod Commission, it's nothing that, not just the planning board, doesn't have to address it, the town of Harwich doesn't really need to...
I think it's notice that the planning board can address it, right?
Well, it says the planning board should have, planning board, site plan approval should have been sought because of the disturbances.
Oh.
So that's why we're kind of, it's on the radar, so we may be implicated...
So would we.
To some date in the future. It's already the cat...
But we wouldn't...
It's already out of, the horse is already out of the barn, so...
Yeah, so we wouldn't, was that something we would do retroactively?
I don't know, I think it's, I don't know, I think it's an enforcement thing at this point, right, so...
Yeah.
At least if we know what's going on, we know what's going on, so, okay. Anything else of note?
Not I.
Anything interesting and historic these days?
If you're asking me about anything other than election right at the moment, I really couldn't tell you.
Okay, no problem, I get it.
No, historic, historic plotting along as it usually does, it's moving forward, we are still in the process of doing the next round of procurement for forms B for the clusters of historic properties over a hundred years of age, which Bob Doan is, is kind of shepherding through the process, he's identified the clusters and...
Like Bank Street and that kind of stuff.
And we'll be reaching out on that to hopefully get some, get the procurement side done so that we can hire somebody to, to do the forms B that never got done on some of those properties.
Great.
So that's through CPC funds, so I will say that CPC is moving forward, applications are due October first for the next round of funding, so just taking the opportunity to put that out there and for those of you that are interested in what will, what does come in, we will put everything on the CPC website for all the applications pending, so they're due in October, people may seek to come before planning or historic or other boards and commissions before December in order to get support for their applications and then we will generally do the next round of funding in January, February, so...
Great.
Mary, I have a suggestion for you, is that if it doesn't, if it's not about elections, you don't want to talk about it, so here's my suggestion, on the day before Tuesday, make sure your vault can open in Yarmouth.
Yeah.
That is, that is, that is a bit unfair to, to the lovely Aunt Quirk, she...
Why was it cast in the stones?
No, I know, no, it is, they break and the vault broke, the mechanism...
Timing is everything in life, huh?
The mechanism broke, so there was no way to, and some of the suggestions that, that were, were made about how she should have moved forward to open that door is a little absurd, but yeah, I mean...
Like Inspector Clouseau or Road Runner, Wally Cuddy.
As soon as I read it, it's somebody going to pop up and say, you know, election fraud or...
There, there, but for the grace of God, go all of us and, and may I never have to be in a situation where I have to hand count every single ballot that is cast in an election and that's what they were faced with, so it was...
Good times.
It's nothing I would wish on my worst enemy, never mind a lady who I, who I respect and I have to give a lot of credit to for handling it the way she did, that was a, an immense amount of pressure to be under on a, on an election day for...
Can't even imagine, oh, God.
Yeah, so my, my sympathies on that, all hundred percent craziness.
Yep.
Just...
Well, test it on Monday.
Knock, knock on, knock on wood.
Before you leave Monday night, if you leave Monday night before election day, it does.
Exactly, yes, I mean, go figure, timing is everything, right?
Where is it physically?
It's one of the vaults in, in Barnstable Town Hall.
Okay.
Yeah, just, something stopped working.
On election, you didn't read that?
Oh, I did, I did, I just didn't know where it was physically.
It was, it was one of the, one of the ones in the, in the town hall. It was, it was one of the, one of the ones in the, in the town hall. Just didn't want to open at 4:15 in the morning and, you know?
Can't imagine. Jeez.
You gotta, we're told to protect the ballots, so there was, they were duly protected.
For sure.
Just a little bit longer than anybody wanted.
All right. Well, I think we have a brief meeting tonight, thankfully, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposing to that one? Okay, great.
Might be a record. Seven oh three.
Seven oh three. I think we had a twenty?